Yeah.
And I feel bad about it because when you're in that cabinet meeting, I remember you and Doug, we realized that we have no pictures up in our house of any of this.
Well, your house is the last thing though.
Yeah. Oh, our house is not, our house is still there. Yeah, we don't, it made me want to make a, we have like this like stairwell going into our basement that's like kind of like darkened place.
Yeah.
They're just like plastered with like pictures like everywhere. So we have no family photo anywhere. We have not had a, a lot of pictures ever.
Yeah.
We just walk down there.
My brother-in-law did like a kind of talk to the side gig and then he was like, sure. I don't know.
Yeah. You never know.
Thank you for pointing it out.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Oh, see, all the details you have to remember. The teachers are walking outside and they're like, it feels so good out here.
Oh, yeah.
Well, Sally, she's back in the room with Rachel and the E C C.
Oh, okay, okay.
Although she did it one night. The teachers help me remember what to do because I don't remember. I'm like, Miss Rachel and Miss Hillary. So now she's. I know, I'm like, I think the school said they started saying, I gotta warm them up. They're on their playground. Yeah. Not messing around with them. That's why I'm like, I just need that. Exactly. And then I think that's something that's going on up there. Teacher is like, no. I am new to it. They're gonna call it JoJo after my grandpa. That's the lady I saw that, yes.
You were outside of it? Yes, this is the first time like kids come out. Oh. Mason had a field plan. Five.
Like my head right.
Call our meeting to order, um, seven oh five, and we will start with the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, made in the soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Um, do we have any citizens' comments this evening?
No.
Thank you. We've got our spotlight on Brentwood.
All right, everyone, welcome back. It's good to see everyone. It's good to have a couple of minutes just to share some good news, some highlights from our school year that just started yesterday. Even though we just started, there's plenty of stuff to celebrate over the summer and things that have come in. So as you, as you know, or just a refresher, we try to split these up into our four strategic plan categories. So student success, school culture, diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility, and unified community engagement. So let's start with student success. And our first one is Brentwood High School senior Demetrius Thompson. That's him on the left. And he has been named to the St. Louis Post-Dispatch Super Thirty list, recognizing the area's top senior football recruits. He recently verbally committed to play Division One football at Southeast Missouri State, choosing the Red Hogs for their championship culture and proximity to family, just down fifty-five. In addition to football, Demetrius is a triple jump state champion, a top basketball rebounder, and a standout in track and field, exemplifying excellence across multiple sports. Uh, Demetrius is number twenty-eight on the list of Super Thirty. Um, and the Brentwood Clayton Football Team opens its season next Thursday, August twenty-eighth, against Principia or at Principia kickoff scheduled for seven P M. And then we have Brentwood High School junior Kristen Turden. And she has been selected to the prestigious Fred Sae Leadership Academy Class of Twenty Twenty-Six, hosted by the Special Education Foundation. Kristen was only, or was one of only twelve students chosen from across the St. Louis region for the Twenty-Five Twenty-Six cohort, which provides immersive leadership training for high school students. Uh, through monthly sessions and site visits, participants explore topics such as teamwork, goal settings, and community involvement, encouraging them to become leaders in their schools and beyond. Um, and I think if I'm right, Trevino, if I remember right, this is the fifth consecutive year that we've had a Brentwood student in this program. So we have a, we have a nice little streak there.
That's great.
Great program. All right, so on to school culture. And our first one over the summer, um, several Brentwood educators participated in the M A S I Summer Institutes at Washington University, dedicating part of their summer break to strengthening science instruction. The M A S I program provides hands-on kit-based science lessons for K-eight students, focusing on curiosity, critical thinking, and real-world problem solving. Uh, the two-day training welcomed over eighty-five teachers from across the St. Louis region, offering opportunities to collaborate, experiment, and deepen instructional practices. Um, this is just one of the many examples of our teachers and staff doing professional development, professional learning over the summertime, curriculum writing, all that kind of good stuff. They're year-round employees, so we like to recognize them. And then our first day of school for school culture. And I took a lot of photos yesterday. It seems like a long time. I think this was like last year too. Uh, it's like, yeah. It's been a long time, but it feels like a long time, but it's not. A lot of time has passed. Um, but this is just right here in the, in the little atrium.
I told you they just kept bugging her.
Yeah. So I took a lot of photos yesterday and a lot of photos, people shared a lot of photos with me, but I think this is just, like, the sequence of it just kind of resonates and what Brentwood is all about and welcoming students back to school. Um, with open arms, with big hugs, with high-fives, with handshakes, with how was your summer stories catching up. Um, just a great atmosphere, a great, a great way to be back. From E C C with Beth Clay and her welcoming new folks out here in McGrath. They had like a, a camping situation going on at Mark Twain, which was pretty cool. They had a whole thing out front. Um, so just, just a great example of bringing community together and, uh, building positive school culture. And Donna. Donna's brace. Okay, and then for unified community engagement. This is Amy's and Lintia's. Um, and last month she, uh, spoke with local residents at the Coffee with the Mayor event. Just sharing a recap of twenty-four, twenty-five highlights, um, some things to look forward to on the horizon, thanking the community for their support. Um, just a great opportunity to get out, expand our bubble, um, see people, meet people, greet people, talk to people. Just a, just a great event. And an open invitation, right?
Apparently, according to Mayor Dibbin.
Mayor Dibbin said she can come anytime. All right, and this next one, um, when rain canceled the chalk-to-walk plans, our parent group leaders pivoted with positiv- positivity, creating heartfelt signs filled with encouragement to welcome back our teachers and staff on Monday, August eleventh. So, uh, it was maybe about an hour before this was supposed to happen and it just poured down.
It seemed in the face of nobody who texted me, I emailed them, I was like, do people still make posters? Like, oh, we're still coming. Don't worry about, and some of them had already made posters. It was great. It was amazing.
So we were prepping for the event on Monday in the gym, putting out T-shirts and things like that, and it was just great to see parent group leadership, students making signs, um, with positive messages to, to welcome back our staff.
And they did such a great job that the Stuco students asked if they could borrow the signs because Stuco decorated the high school, um, and put signs all around the, the building for, for most of the high schools.
So we really appreciate our, our P T Os and our booster groups for everything that they do for our students and staff and schools. Um, they just go above and beyond and it's, it's a really great, um, unique thing to Brentwood. All the extra support they provide. And then our last one, this also happened last week. Um, we partnered with the Brentwood Police Department and members of the Brentwood P D visited all district campuses to lead active intruder training and emergency response planning with teachers, staff, and administrators. These hands-on sessions and safety discussions helped ensure our school community is prepared to respond quickly and effectively in an emergency. And we're thankful for our partnership with the Brentwood Police Department and keeping our students, staff, and schools safe. And this was just great. All right, any questions? Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always great. Hey, Keith, if we could do roll call, please.
Mark Cicero.
Here.
Katie Clark.
Here.
Ryan Dodson.
Here.
Ryan Flynn.
Here.
Keith Rafer.
Here.
Katie Spall.
Here.
Lisa Spencer.
Here.
Thank you. If I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's out.
Okay, in a second. Very quiet. Okay, we've got a second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, wonderful. That leads us into our superintendent's report.
Okay, we, uh, it's the Matt Norrit Show for the next few agenda items. If Matt wants to come on up, we've got, starting with the A S B R or Annual Secretary Board Report submission.
I might have to ask, but regardless, because I think we had.
Be guarded for the consent.
Never mind, we'll take that out. All right, so, um, first item that we have, uh, for recommendation, it's not an item for approval, it's just an information item. It's our annual secretary of board report. We're just letting you all know as a board that we met our obligations to perform our reporting by the fifteenth of this month. We did that well before. I know that I can always promise that we do it by July twenty-second, but we were that early this year. Um, if we don't submit on time, we do lose a point, uh, with the state reporting. We also get a letter that's sent to our superintendent and they threaten to withhold some of our funding. So we were successful in all of that report.
Any questions that I'm going to ask here? Just a standard yearly thing we do.
It's financial information, debt information. If we had transportation, we'd include that data as well.
Great.
And the next step is there will be auditing that information as well as our financial information.
Okay. Next up, we have budget revision number three.
So as we discussed during our last board meeting in June, um, board authorized me as a CFO to perform certain transfers of budget line items to meet the requirements set forth by the state of Missouri for auditors, interpretations of this. Um, so budget amendment number three is actually the results of last year's. This is last year's budget. This is just the results of the authorizations. This is an information item that doesn't require any action required.
Any questions?
All right, next one, budget revision, Twenty-Five Twenty-Six, budget revision number one.
Budget revision number one is the first budget revision for the Twenty-Five Twenty-Six school year. Um, what this reflects is at the end of last year, any outstanding purchase orders that we had that we still had obligations to pay, we closed those. We carry those forward into our school year for Twenty-Five Twenty-Six. This is reflecting those purchase orders in the amount that we still owe on those amounts. So it reduced our spend in last year and carried that spend into our new fiscal year. And we're not applying these, um, costs against the budget that we proposed to you all for approval as our initial document.
Okay, if I could get a motion to approve the budget revision number one.
Yeah, if I make a motion to approve budget revision number one. Second.
Great discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved.
Next up, the ever-exciting topic of copier proposals. Matt's been spending a lot of time on this, so I want to thank him for his due diligence, making sure we make the right choice.
I want to thank Sean Parker as well as part of this. Um, Mr. Dodson also helped us with this as well, so they were part of our committee, um, for selection and review of these documents. So we, we provided, um, a formal proposal. So typically you can go through the process of an R F P, request for proposal, or you can go through a cooperative purchasing agreement. We pursued a formal R F P for this process. We advertised the bid. We opened sealed bids in a public setting so that any vendors that did bid had the opportunity to see the bids or at least hear the bids that were provided. Um, the, I, we also, so we bid equipment, and we also asked for a, um, an option for solely a service agreement. At the end of our current lease, we'll take possession of our existing cannons. Um, we have a five-year agreement on that. Our, per our review, felt that there was determined that the equipment that we have in place is not necessarily due for a physical refresh, but we have been refreshing that equipment every five years. What we're requi- what we're proposing to the school board is a maintenance agreement for an additional five years. So we won't have the cost of leasing that equipment anymore. We'll solely have the cost of providing the toner and the service and maintenance to that equipment. The lowest bid on that proposal, lowest qualified bid was Office Source. Out of those two, we also did perform reviews of some other equipment, just to make sure that you all knew that we weren't just going with something that did some improvements. Um, this is slightly less than a replacement of equipment. Part of the reason why we chose this instead of a replacement was because it does take the efforts of our technology department to replace some of that equipment and reintegrate it. So there is the savings of that labor and we're able to dedicate that time toward other efforts with that as school restraint.
Thanks. Have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the copier proposals. Second.
Discussion.
So when is typically the end of life for one of these copiers? So it's based on volumes. So currently with our current volumes, we should be at end of life at the end of this next year, five-year cycle. So we will, um, part of our process is going to be actually reviewing the number of clicks or images that have been on all of these devices and then evaluating if there's items that have less volume, putting them in places that have higher volume, to reallocating equipment to take advantage of how much they're actually being used. If there's equipment that does go down, that's what our maintenance agreement is in place. It still doesn't fall on our folks to do that replacement of equipment. But we're expecting end of life will be in the next five years. You said you, you mentioned that you looked at one of these being a service where they own the copier and they just provide the service. I might have misspoke. Well, we, we will own these machines. So what we looked at was solely a maintenance agreement to service our equipment. Typically, when you're doing copiers, you're looking at a fair market value lease, or you're looking at, um, Brian will probably chime in here, but it's a one-dollar buyout. So basically, it's a loan to take possession of that equipment, but you don't technically own the equipment until you pay that dollar. For capital purposes or, um, inventory, however you want to track those assets, they're technically ours. Question. Yeah. I see some of these others have a lower estimated total cost even though they have good maintenance included. Sure. To consider. There's one piece of equipment that we did not consider to be, um, an adequate replacement. We're currently using cannons, which cannon devices are determined by our technology department to be a high-quality piece of equipment. One of the devices that was proposed was actually an inkjet instead of a toner jet. So we didn't know that until, so we accepted alternatives. Only one bidder actually provided a bid that you'll see that was a cannon device, which is the direct replacement of the equipment that we have. The next closest was, um, Tiostera's. No, I'm sorry, Chronicle Manolos, and then third was Tiostera Devices. Okay. So, so the, almost five years. Sorry, Ebsin ones. The Ebsins we determined were, were any jet devices. Um, we didn't feel that they would keep up with the demand of our existing, but there was also another device that was proposed that was much smaller with much, I don't think that it would kept up with the volume and the demand of what we're putting through these devices currently. So we. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I was going to say we did allow alternates. So even though we said prefer was cannons, um, we allowed the alternate of requested equipment. So that required technology to pull the spec sheets on each one of these pieces of equipment that were an alternate to really make the determination of a specific piece of restraint. And then also reference reviews on the final. So we're, are we committing to a certain amount of volume? No, this is per click. So this is not. Per click, so it's just an estimate? Yes, it's based on the estimate of our current volumes over the last twelve months. Okay. Do we see that volume changing at all given the digital world has passed, uh, uh, cell phones and some, some classrooms not using? So we don't print from cellular devices. We also don't print from Chromebooks. We only print from our laptops and our PCs. So the cellular devices shouldn't impact any of our print.
I was hoping it was to be a pretty standard. There's not anything dramatically changing that would, would be able to go on that, like a resource change or anything like that, that would make me believe.
So if our, if our volume went down, just the digital world keeps on increasing, would we be penalized for not, okay? This is per click contracts. Okay. So these are all based, um, the, the two maintenance agreements that were proposed and the majority of the vendors that proposed quotes were all based on, we call them clicks, but number of images printed that are color, number of images that are printed monique. If one of these devices we own no longer functions, are we still responsible for it? So we would still, so that device, if it became faulty, would no longer be producing images, so we wouldn't have the cost associated with it. And if it's a device that's in demand, we can go and replace it and device.
Any other follow-up questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, last permit is the adult meal prices.
So each year, um, we go through the process of adopting student meal prices. Later, after that comes out, in the middle of the summer, they give us the new form for adult meal prices. So, um, again, this is the same time we do this every year, so we are asking for any increase on adult meal prices of ten cents. We're not asking to make any modifications in the price. Make a motion to approve the adult meal prices as outlined. Second.
Discussion.
So being that it's first day or first week of school, I've just got to ask this question because it's something that my kids, you know, it's like the sandwiches, we're small.
Oh.
I guess my question is within with this price increase, are the portions staying the same or do we have any control, have any control over that whatsoever? So all of our portions are according to smart snack guidelines. So the vol- everything's based on how many calories are in the product that's being presented. So it's not necessarily the portion size. We are only permitted to, and I can get you the exact of this, Ms. Stevens. I just wanted to share a little bit of people. They love the lunches. We're bound to the calories and the content of what is in it. So sodium, sugar, carbs, all those things are heavily regulated. Um, there were recent restrictions on some of the things that we were able to provide that happened within the fiscal year. Um, again, that is federal regulations, smart snack guidelines. It's what allows us to get reimbursement from U S D O.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Matthew. Um, now, uh, Dr. Zora up here for, uh, behavioral risk assessment.
Good evening. Um, since I have kind of a heavy topic, I just want to open by saying what a joyful start to the school year. It's been delightful. Everyone's very happy. Uh, but I am here tonight to talk about something that we're, we are, um, recommending that the board adopts this policy next month, right, with the actual policy adoption.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So introducing the policy and then also the training that many members of our staff have had that go along with this policy and how we expect, um, we hope we will never have to use it, but how we would if we needed to. So the behavioral risk assessment policy is essentially a policy, um, that we would recommend the board adopts that outlines the process for how our district would respond when we have any concerns about a student's, um, safety and, and the safety of others. And so much like for many years, we've had a And so, much like for many years, we've had a suicide risk assessment plan and policy that supports that, this is very similar, except it applies to scenarios where we feel like students may be threatening the safety of others. And I actually haven't broadened that into not just say students, but really anybody who would be on any of our campuses. It gives us a protocol and a process to follow to ensure safety, and then support for anybody who's involved. And so, our board has not adopted this policy in the past, but it was written into the new Senate Bill 68 that our state legislature passed this spring, that for boards who do have this policy and follow this process, the new law mandates that any documents or student safety plans, or the assessment tool itself for a particular student becomes part of that student's record, and then is transferable if that student were to transfer among districts. And so we do feel like that's really important information to follow a student. And so we have, I will say, while our board has not adopted this policy, we have always had our processes for responding to any types of threats or safety red flags, but this does help formalize it and did give a number of us some pretty in-depth training, moving forward should we have similar situations in the future. So in late May, we trained our behavioral risk assessment team district-wide, so that included all of our administrators, counselors, social workers, our nurses, and our SRO. And so now that we have a trained team, we are confident that we can adhere to the expectations of this policy, and we can expand knowledge of what that process is to all staff in the district. And so essentially, what we are asking all staff to do, as they've always done, and I think has always been the expectation, but anytime they have any concern about violence, that they report that to a trained member of the behavioral risk assessment team. So it may be that they have concerns about comments a student made, maybe illustrations, maybe frequent references to things that are a bit unsettling. It may be that a parent brings us a report, that their child is feeling unsafe for some reason. And also, like I said, it may be an adult, you know, sometimes you hear of cases where, you know, maybe a relative or an estranged family member of an employee may pose some kind of safety threat. And so we are able to follow this process in any scenario. And once they report that to the behavioral risk assessment team, and the team for that building would come together, and they would start this response protocol. I am also on the team. I have asked all of our trained team members to bring me in as a member of the team. This is something we don't expect, we'll have to do very often, hopefully never. And so when we do, I think it's, it'll be important that we all kind of do a refresher together of what our steps are that we need to take. I know this is very small, and it's also just a screenshot of what is a much larger document, so I'm just going to talk you through generally what would happen. In the process for the risk assessment, there is a screener, and then there is a more thorough assessment if needed. So when a report is brought to the team, they're first going to do that, well, I would say they will first decide, is there an immediate safety concern right now? If so, we need to call the police, we need to call 911, anything like that. Otherwise, they're going to do a screener. And a screener is kind of an abbreviated process where they'll interview the student, they will interview the person who reported it, they may interview some witnesses if it was a comment that was overheard, and they're going to contact if it's a student, that student's parent. And after doing interviews with everybody who has knowledge of what was alleged, then they'll complete this, what this screenshot here on the right is, kind of 11 questions of, you know, how, what is our level of concern? If they feel like they can check all the boxes confidently, that no, we are not concerned that this is anything more serious than, you know, maybe a student who is lacking maturity in that moment and said something they shouldn't have said, in that case, it would be documented, they would talk about some next steps to just, you know, further educate that child on using safe language and making safe choices, and those would then become part of the student's record, but it wouldn't go any further than that. If there are any concerns that are noted on this screener, or if the team feels like we just need more information. So for example, if we have concerns that maybe there are weapons in the home, and we feel like maybe someone's not being honest with us about that, or maybe we just don't know the student well enough, because they're new to us, and we don't have a lot of background on the student, at that point, we would go on to a more thorough evaluation. And so that more thorough evaluation is still really just a lot of interviews with people around, but much more thorough and much more targeted questions. I think I, no, I don't have them on here. More targeted questions with the students themselves of, you know, have you, how long have you been having thoughts like this, and what would you do if, and better understanding kind of where they are emotionally in that moment. So the flow chart there kind of explains, you know, you do the screener, and then if you need the full assessment, you move on. And at the end of all of this, whether it was determined that this was probably a one-time offhanded comment, or this is more serious, regardless of the outcome, there's always going to be a support plan that is in place. All of these documents were provided to us as part of our training. We have templates for the whole process. It is very thorough, many pages long. This is one screenshot of a support plan that would be probably four or five pages, depending on the level of incident. And the response management and support plan, the team assigns a, kind of a case manager, a person who's the monitor of that plan. And it goes through everything, like you can see examples here of, you know, is this a student who needs to have a safety plan where their personal belongings get checked when they come to school, all the way to things that may be much more significant of, we're working with law enforcement at this point, we're taking action. I think what is really important, and what I appreciate about this process and this training, is that it is very empathetic and supportive. It is, there will always be a school discipline component to this process if it's warranted, but this very thorough assessment is in addition to, and in some ways separate from the school discipline, of what support does the student need? What support do any, it may be intended victims or targets or others who were mentioned, what support do they need in this process? How do we make sure that we are in constant contact with parents, with outside care providers, anybody who's involved in helping the student and enabling them? And all of this is based on decades of research by law enforcement, the FBI, the Secret Service, of what are some of the signs of a pathway to violence? What can we look for? What are early interventions that we can do so that we can support kids and adults long before it would escalate to a point where we would be looking at any kind of violent incident? So, have any questions?
So I'm just curious, is this just, can a parent bring this to our attention, and then you guys take it in on with it, or is this things that occur within?
No, so this could be outside of school incidents as well. Yeah, if a parent came to us with, you know, hey, my kid, here's a screenshot from my kid's phone, so-and-so said something, you know, over the weekend, we would have the same response. Yeah, so really, any kids who are in our care, we're going to respond, you know, and sometimes it gets a little bit fuzzy as to whether there is a school discipline response for something that maybe happened outside of school, but if, if it's a concern about a kid who's in our care, then we're going to respond with this process.
And all of this, we have a system that documents all this, or is this like a Google folder?
Good question. So right now, it does, these all do live in a Google folder that the team has access to, but now that we have moved toward online registration in Infinite Campus, there is a portal in Infinite Campus where when we create a student record, we can upload it and attach it. And it is highly confidential, like all student records, like their teachers wouldn't have access to it. It was, it's only there if, you know, the student were to transfer, it would go with them as part of their student record. Yeah.
I do like how you said we've been doing this, you know, in the past. I really love the idea of having a policy and a procedure that's outlined, also for our community to know that there is a procedure that we have in place that we can follow, and it's reassuring to families, I would hope, that there's support. And you were saying, like, there is, it's there to help mitigate a situation, and also support for students. It's just another piece that we have, something like that.
I think one of the things that we have found, and it happens everywhere, is that sometimes people want to know things that we can't tell them because of specific incidences. But now we can point them to these documents, that this is the process we follow when things like this may happen, so people can know more concretely, that I think hopefully they will be comfortable. And the training was excellent, it was, it was very good to refresh, and to give us, again, resources that were very specific.
One other thing that I failed to mention, that part of that, at the end of the screener, when it's asking the team, like, what next steps, one of the specific questions is, is this a student who needs a suicide risk assessment? Because there is often overlap, and students are having some emotional challenges, that it may be both, you know, a threat to others and/or a threat to themselves.
So if this record gets created and is attached to our, our record, I don't know if that's a phrase used more, but, and they transfer to another school, who at the other school can see it, and conversely, if we get a student with a report like this, who hears it?
So typically, when we receive records from another student, I would, you know, and it's, it's not going to be exactly the same in every district, but typically, it's going to be reviewed by the administrator of that school, the registrar, maybe somebody who's in a position like mine in central office, if there's a bigger concern, if we want to make sure that this student is safe. It does not, it wouldn't be viewed by teachers, and we're all beholden to the same confidentiality laws, which is strictly a need-to-know basis, and typically, if it's something that has, let's say that it was just a screener, it was a one-time incident, it's been resolved, there's no ongoing concerns, I think most districts would agree that it's not a need-to-know for anyone outside of, like, the principal of the school who's received that student, the registrar who's putting it in the system.
Does this involve any mandatory reporting?
It would overlap with that, yeah.
It's part of the.
Yes, yeah, so, right, it doesn't replace any processes that we would already have for things like mandatory reporting of neglect or abuse.
So if a student undergoes this, this checklist and everything, do we, do we contact, are our attorneys involved at all?
I think it depends on the level of the incident. So typically, if there is a seriousness to it, where there's a school discipline response as well, and there's some question as to like what our next steps can be or should be, we may consult our own attorneys, but it is, you know, generally speaking, if we're working with a family, and we feel like things are moving in a direction where we're kind of all agreeing on what needs to happen next, like, we would not involve our attorneys unless they felt they needed to involve their attorneys. But more often than not, it's a collaborative plan to, with the family, to try to get that student's accord.
So if something happened under our, whatever, our administration of this plan, if something happened, are we liable for that as a district?
You mean if we had done this screener and we had?
And that's something.
I actually think this would probably protect us more than anything, where we can show our interventions that we put into place and our supports that we put into place. I, I think because this is so thorough, it is probably better than, historically, what I think most districts may have done, which is, we had a meeting with the parents, and we documented these things, where this is actually spelling out a very specific plan for support, that if we can show we've provided all of these interventions and support, we're probably, I would say, I'm not an attorney, but I, I would say my experience on safer legal ground in terms of liability, that we have done what's expected of a public school to do.
I think the danger would be is that you set up a bunch of stuff that you're supposed to do and then don't. Don't do it.
And don't do it, yeah. Well, yeah, that, yeah.
And I would say that true whether or without this.
Yeah.
And what MSBA, when they did the training, that was one of the pieces they actually mentioned, was that schools have been sued in the case of some significant tragedies. One of the reasons that they have been gotten in trouble, you know, from a liability standpoint, is that they haven't done this kind of thing. They don't have documentation, or they don't have a process that they followed to demonstrate that they took things seriously, or dismissed a threat, didn't do anything, showing that we went through this process is, was my takeaway from, one of my takeaways from the training was that this ensures that we don't drop any balls that could then later open us up to bigger liability. But to the point of where we really will get in trouble key is when we say we're going to do something and don't do it, or don't respond at all, and that's where our attorneys will, based on conversation with them. And this ensures consistency too across the district, which I think is extremely important, even with our students.
Thank you. So this is something that we would approve that our next.
The policy, yeah, we'll just approve it as part of our, our policy. We wanted to do a more formal presentation, this is newer, and I do think it's important for you all to see the actual process, so. It's kind of a separate, there's not that, necessarily timely, because we're already doing it.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can I have one more question?
Yeah.
So is this separate, or is this more geared towards violence against others rather than violence against self? I'm just imagining that if someone was in a mental health crisis, and then this gets flagged as like they have a checkmark against them.
Right.
So is this separate from that?
Yeah, if, if the only concern is that there may be self-harm or suicide, then they're going to go with our counselors and social workers through the suicide risk assessment, and be referred out if, or call 911, you know, if there's immediate need. Yeah, it is a separate process. I can see scenarios where we might be doing both at the same time, but we do, right, we would, we would never want to, for anybody to, you know, feel like they've been marked or tagged with a document because of a mental health crisis. I mean, the reality is that this also is oftentimes going to use of students who are having a mental health crisis. It's just, it's a slightly different process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Dr. Miller with our 26, 27 calendar. Okay, you'll have to look at it.
Oh, it's attached to your, it should be in your. Oh, your, yeah. They should all see it.
It's probably easier to use.
Yeah, it is.
I have a copier, but if you can't.
You have to download it.
So just some historical context about this calendar is traditionally, we adopt two calendars. This is an every-two-year cycle. And so historically, the 26, 27 calendar would have actually been brought to you in March, with also a 27, 28 calendar. In the past, that's caused problems because we are the last district to adopt calendars, families are planning vacations earlier than they used to in the past, and so in order to better meet the needs of the community, we decided to adopt this at the end of last, or go through the process of looking at adopting a calendar much earlier in the school year, and also just doing one year at a time. So as opposed to trying to do two calendars and have a bunch of committees, start getting confused with different dates, and also, we were approving it very late in the year, we kind of switched things up last year and just did one calendar. Because this was not like a major revision, the goal of the committee was to keep the same number of days, and not make any substantial changes, but just kind of rework the calendar because of when our winter break falls, and different things around holidays, just to try to meet the needs of everybody. So there are not any substantial changes. When we did last survey the community, the overwhelming response was we want to end school before Memorial Day, no matter what. We don't want extra breaks, we want Memorial Day. And so we put this calendar together based on that survey. We had teachers, we had parents do this at the end of last school year. We were waiting on a few more information, which is why we are just now asking you to approve this at the August meeting. Coming up this next semester, we are going to do a bigger revision for the 27, 28, where we resurvey the community, look if we want some more substantial changes, but that way we're always putting a calendar two years in advance out for families who are planning vacations and whatnot. So the calendar follows a similar pattern, and if you have any specific questions, I am happy to answer them.
We will make a motion that we approve the 26, 27 academic calendar as a guideline.
Second.
Discussion? I love that this is coming out so early. I think our community has wanted this forever, so thank you, this is, this is big.
As someone that has already had to submit my vacations for the entirety of 2026, thank you. It's actually a day too late, but.
Start it. Next time, next time.
See if we want to have this meeting like sleep before school starts.
Great, any other feedback, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is approved, thank you so much.
I'm still very passionate, that was more of a ridiculous.
I love it. Calendars used to be my responsibility, like previous role, and I think it never made a difference. I just love sitting up here looking at the calendar, that's great. I was ever going to count it to 188 or something, and it just always turned. So very excited to have that calendar out there. That was all for the superintendent.
Okay, so for our Board of Education update, we do have a ton of policies. Thank you, everyone, for our previous policy meeting and taking time to review these. I, I think it would be great to just approve these all in bulk, if we're comfortable with that.
You were just going to ask, do we approve them all at one?
Instead, I think there are.
You can do it by?
We can do it by section, by.
Do it by section?
Do it by section.
Okay. So, so we'll start with, yeah, MSBA 25A policy.
I make a motion to approve MSBA 25A policy updates as outlined.
Second?
Discussion, do you need a...
I need to, it wasn't that one, I have to reopen the policy discussion. It's not for this cohort, it's for the college.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve MSBA 25A policy updates as outlined.
Second?
Discussion?
Yeah.
It's fine, there's no rush. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve MSBA 25A policy updates as outlined.
Second?
Discussion?
So on the IGBCA, the full-time mocap virtual courses, I wanted to know what that actually looks like for us? And if you had to be full-time virtual to be eligible for athletics, or how?
You don't have to be full-time virtual to, to do athletics, you can still do athletics if you're part-time virtual, but this now allows the students who are virtual 100% of the time.
Can also.
Can also.
So if there's no problem, they're still eligible.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and before they were not.
So it could increase our opportunity for students to participate.
And then on the following one, the resident participation, student involvement in activities and events, do we know how many students are presently in our city and categorized as such?
Say that again, please.
Do we know how many students are presently in our city and categorized as such? And I would have to, I mean, quote the policy.
No, so like, when it says resident students, that can, like, play the sports and do the, do anything?
Do we have anyone that's actually participating and are taking advantage of the policy?
We do, actually, we did have someone who's a homeschool student who's going to want to participate in, I think it's soccer, I think it's soccer. So we do have one. Homeschool students are not required to tell the school district in the state of Missouri or tell anybody that they're being homeschooled, so there is no way for us to know what that number is in the community that we live in. So that is, we, they, they can fill out a form to let us know, they don't have to. Most, my experience has been the only people that have filled out the form are those who are withdrawing to homeschool, I don't know if there's one, that I've seen, but typically, they homeschool from the very beginning, we have no way to track them or know them.
On the JFCD, that follow one, just when it introduced the cellphone policy, I just wondered if there were any other values that we wanted to state as, like, because we value this, this is what, and maybe not just...
I would say that would probably fall under a procedure, because that may change in the, the document that we created with our technology group statement, follows under a procedure that I would put on here, I would, like, a policy should stick more to the legal requirement that we are to follow, and then we do have our technology group statement and the words that, that can be used on, that falls under procedure.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve MSBA 24A policy updates as outlined.
Second?
Discussion?
So I had a question on this one, if it should, I'm just trying to forecast potential uses of AI, and it said that you couldn't create images in another's likeness using AI without consent, that I wrote down just a little note, should this be written permission? That might be silly if you're just goofing around in class, but with AI, you can really take images and likenesses, and a verbal consent coming from the medical profession does not hold as well as written. So I don't, maybe I'm making too big a deal out of it, but I feel like it opens us up for someone saying, they said yes, and I didn't violate the policy, but it could get unruly.
I think that's a very fair comment, especially with...
Even if it's a classroom project, where you're, like, trying to make them look like cats or something, then you can say, you, I mean, have my permission to make them look like a cat, you know what I mean? Like, I just, I hear how silly that sounds, but I'm afraid that if we don't include some sort of reference point, that it's just all in the wind.
So the way I, if you know, it says, AI users are responsible for any harm caused by their use, by their AI use in the district, and structural staff will oversee student AI use in the classroom, monitor whether it's safe, educational, effective use, is that not adequate to cover, or are you saying that?
Um, it, hold on, let me pull, because I pulled up my notes, not the actual, um, there was a point where it just said, um, yeah, can you see it before?
Procedure, yeah.
I'm wondering if it could be part of the procedure piece, that even if, at some point, we have a slip, you know, our students have to sign a form, say, man, I understand how to use their phones properly, at some point, we have a form that students sign, like, this is what we expect of, these are the rules, and this is how we do it, so it could be part of, wrap it into procedure.
Yeah.
We're comfortable with it?
Good idea.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. These are good conversations, thank you.
That was, and my concern was specifically around point six on the use and prohibitions, just because it, to me, was an open to interpretation.
Yeah.
Okay, so approving this policy as it's written, but taking into account these steps for a procedure, that's a vote on here. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And one more back.
This one, I think.
This is, I'm going way back to MSBA 25A, and I know that we already said yes to that, but the address needs updating, it had our handling court address in it.
For...
For, for IGBCA homeless students, number E.
Thank you, yeah, that's great. Okay, and then that last one, that was our policies.
This is the one, so we can do the short form, that we approve every, so there are no changes to this one, we just, we just need to...
Make a motion to approve the SD initiative policy updates as outlined.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, okay, then we have next, our Missouri Ethics Commission, conflicts of interest resolution, we need to approve by executive committee. If I could have a motion to approve...
Oh, sorry, I make a motion to approve the non-credit interest resolution as outlined.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve MSBA 25, 26 refreshment.
Second?
So wait, this is not, this is not, actually, just a, just a reminder, we were on a roll though, so that was great. I love it! So we have every, every year, after you do your really long training, like Katie Clark has just done for us, every year, we have a one-year refresher. So just a reminder, I know Kate has signed us all up for that, so at our own time, we can take care of that.
Yes.
It should be in your email, and it does take an hour, which is great. Sometimes it takes me many months to do it, but it really, truly only takes an hour. So that's just a reminder.
We can't just have Ryan approve.
That's a nice one.
We almost did!
So close.
Wonderful, all right, MSBA delegate reports, Keith, I know, we've got our big event coming up.
But I'm still not, I was telling Kate earlier today, I'm not getting any, I think they may still have you on the list, because I'm not getting, I have not received any emails from them.
Well, that's why I still ask Keith.
I'm the silence.
We're hosting region set of registration.
Yes, we are hosting, it will look really good if we have a lot of people, it's free dinner, it's just easy.
Have they told you how many people are assigned yet?
No, they said last year, there was about 100 that attended, so they're going to give it to me.
We'll get a preliminary count tomorrow supposedly, and then like a final count the next Wednesday.
So we're going to be in the cafeteria, or not, I'm sorry, we're going to be in the gym at the high school, and we'll register the condoms, apparently, I'm going to say a couple of things about how amazing Redwood is, and then we feed people, and then they have usually a little PD kind of training, a little bit of conversations. I've been to one, so I'm, I'm judging this by the one I've been to.
They just did, there was a mail...
I should say that you were asking about what to have Chartwell's serve dinner, and I thought about this later, I went to one of those 20 years ago at Ladue, and that was the first time Chartwell's fed me anything, and it was prime rib, as I recall.
That feels very Ladue-esque. We'll have to ask all of that's Lauren, what other high-scale things we have.
Run that by him, since they did that for Ladue 20 years ago.
There's been no inflation on the cost of that, so we'll see. There we go. So we'll have to see, we'll have to check.
Yeah, so it would be great if people can attend, I think there was an email today that MSBA weekly sent out an email, just giving an agenda for all of the regional meetings. Tracking phones, let's see, cellphone policy updates, homeschool student participation activities, lots of things we talked about tonight, compensation requirements and pressures and long-term financial planning, so those are the things that MSBA will be sharing with all of the folks that are here with us on September 3rd.
I think it's over by eight.
You're all, you're all signed up.
You get to come for free, yeah.
You don't have to do anything big.
Sure. Yeah, no, it's, the gym, there'll be about 100 people. This is a selling, we gotta get, remember, we don't want to be the best-kept secret of education, we want everyone to know, how about this?
And we should wear our purple. It could be an event that we wear our purple.
Yes, please, please wear purple.
Do we have entertainment lined up, is there a band play or something?
I will ask Grant Criner if they can, they can play.
I mean, you've been to these things, it's usually...
I only went to once.
Last year.
They did have Major Walk-in.
Yes, they had the cheerleaders, I can cheering as we walked in the door.
We, we hosted this, and, a long, long time ago, when John Coeur had a couple of violins, kids with violins playing, it was very classy.
That is very fancy, but I don't think we have anybody teaching violins anymore, so, but I will talk to Grant.
You do have fancy ideas for this tonight, your ideas are fancy.
I like, I like these, I just, well, I want to, I do want to highlight one, so I do like the idea of the band, and, and we have the middle school cheerleaders, we have a, a stronger numbers in the middle, we have a very solid winter cheerleaders at high school, but fall is only like five or six kids, so we need to reach out to our middle schoolers again to welcome people. They did a great job welcoming the teachers, they're very, so we'll reach out to them.
Great. Okay, SSD Governing Council report, I don't know if there have been any meetings?
Not since Mark went in June for me.
Okay, perfect. And Board Committee Updates, I'm pretty sure our committees are going to be starting up again now that the new school year's started, we will put information out to the community for community participation as well in these committees, so more to come out very soon.
Yeah, we should hopefully get those scheduled, I think mine from last year were scheduled, but we'll want to send out another communication, just asking for any other participants, I'll be asking, because people's lives get busy until the numbers tend to dwindle as the year goes along, so more people, we can have a part of these committees better.
Great, 353, I'm assuming no meetings?
No.
Okay.
Off the press, September 17th at 6:00 PM, there's a 353 redevelopment meeting, and then I should have mentioned too, on September 24th, they do the economic development sales tax committee is happening as well, so, 17, 24?
September is busy for you.
We won, yeah.
I think we were like, there's hardly ever any meetings. Okay, Ryan, thank you for being our representative on this committee, that committee is great. And then last, we just have upcoming events, workshop policy being on the second.
I mean, it's highly likely that the second will get canceled, we don't, I mean, obviously, we just, we just approved a whole lot of policies, so we will most likely cancel the meeting itself, but we do, we will want to hire the counseling position by, at that meeting, so if it is okay, we may just do a Zoom, I mean, I hate to have you come up for...
They want to come see me.
We could do a Zoom just for that hire, and do the, of a closed, a business meeting, so we can...
So we'll let you know soon if that's great.
Yeah, so that you can prepare your calendar, but I, I hate to have you come in for one item on a closed agenda.
Since the other meeting is on the third, it would be appreciated.
We could actually, we could do it on the third. We could actually do it for, like, have you guys all just come on 10 minutes early real quick?
As long as we have a forum.
Before the third, if enough people are planning to attend, I, I would be there.
Yes, yeah.
On the third, yes.
That sounds great, just plan on that.
Okay, so we're canceling the second.
Yes.
Um, the high school alumni reunion is supposed to hear that same weekend as Brentwood Days, and we're always invited to come up to the high school for that, it's at 3:00, an annual event, which is really fantastic, and Brentwood Days, and the run, I mean, these are board things, but the 5K is also attached.
How's the word about the reunion part of it, how's that spread out?
The Alumni Association text area.
They're their own nonprofit. I mean, just my dad's not a much, my dad graduated from here in '67, so...
Does he, there is a newsletter that they send out, and they send them out to board members too, so you may receive one, and if you don't, I have one at my house.
Maybe you have no interest in reunions, I don't know.
Okay, great, and then just regular meetings, and we're always, every month, giving a plug for the Fall Conference if you're interested in it. So, those are our events. We've got anything else, either the committee or a motion to adjourn?
I'm adjourned.
Second?
All in favor, say aye. Thank you, everyone.
Well, I told my mom we're in the grass, and she's like, is this going to be a...
We're going to do roll calls, one more roll call, we've done, like, so I have enough time.
Yes. Yes.